You are listening to Not on the Payroll, right here at notonthepayroll.com. You can check us out at Facebook, YouTube, you can check us out at Rumble. Hey, go check out our new Facebook page, in case you're wondering which one it is, go look for the gorilla with the red headphones. That's the ones you need, that's the one you need to like, share and subscribe to, because that's where all the information is going. As of the end of September, we will be showing now the other Facebook page, the one that actually says, "We are moving." We're trying to give you every indication that we are moving. But go look for that gorilla with the red headphones, you'll be good to go. We have the privilege today of sitting down with Councilman Rashad Lewis. The last time we sat down, man, he was running.
Yeah.
Hey, so congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, man, so is everything working out like you thought?
I would have to say yes. I think it is the things that are what we're moving to as a city. Everything that I wanted and dreamed of in the beginning of the election, I see us slowly moving in that direction.
Moving in that direction, okay.
Correct.
Alright, so, some of the things, now, when did you actually take office? What was roughly the date?
The day I got sworn in?
Yeah.
Or...
Yeah, well, let's just say...
It was May.
Okay, so it's been a few months.
Correct.
Been a few months. What good things for the community you feel like you guys have been able to pull off since then? I know that's a short amount of time.
Right. There's a lot of things that we have coming down the pipeline, that I don't think the people know of, or we've already just talked about in open.
Okay.
We're bringing back the idea of the splash pad for the kids. I think we're just trying to figure out which location, which park would be the best place to hold splash pad for the kids. Also, we've been in conversation about adding a skateboard addition to the park.
Really?
For the kids out here who have an ideal, I'm a skateboarder myself, so it was ideal to give them a place in the area where they could, you know, practice and do what they're doing.
Yeah.
Another addition is at the basketball court. We're planning on expanding it and putting a metal building over it and making it like a pavilion.
Oh, yeah.
To where the kids can play rain, sleep in snow at night and things like that. Also, it would allow us to host like aerobic classes, zumba classes under the pavilion of the basketball court. So we're doing things to try to make things more active in the city within the community, all age demographics.
Got you, got you, got you. So right now, all of those things are just kind of being talked about?
They're being talked about, they're being put into perspective and we're trying to figure out how much would these projects cost if we go ahead and go forward with them. So we're doing all the behind the scene works to bring them to the city.
That's awesome, man. Yeah, you know, it's like with the splash pad and the skateboard park, I mean, those two things right there are automatically going to be a heck yes in the right direction. And I mean, even with the pavilion, I mean, adding on and doing that, making that available, that's gonna be, that'll be a nice resource as well for folks. I mean, because I know the pavilions that currently just have picnic tables under.
Yeah.
Man, every weekend, you're almost seeing birthday after birthday and that type of thing, so that'd be pretty cool.
I think it'd be great, because like you say, you get a bigger court.
Yeah.
And the one that we have the idea is it has like the lights and the fans under it to keep the people cool. And I think it'd be great, you know, just for the kids and just for the adults to have, you know, classes and things like that, so.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Yeah, I think it's a great.
That'd be very cool.
Yeah.
So, couple of quick questions for you, obviously before we kind of jump into current events. Now, I know back during the election, there was a petition and everything about the electrical and all the utilities and all that stuff. What's kind of the steps that the city's made since that point, when the, I guess a petition reached kind of a five to one and basically was presented as a cap on this, with this 10%, this 10% cap that I guess is on the electrical or the utilities? What kind of headway has the city made as far as implementing that?
When it comes to the Proposition A that was on the ballot at the same time, come to find out, we just had a budget meeting, I want to say Thursday.
Okay.
And the Proposition A, or the narrative of the Proposition A, was misleading towards the people.
Okay.
Prior to the Proposition A on the ballot, the city only had a 3% cap, which means no matter what happened in the economic or gas or fuel, no matter how high it got, the city could never charge any more than 3% on electrical bills. Proposition A allowed them to remove that 3% cap and have the ability to raise up to 10%.
Really?
So now, where the narrative was, we're saving people money on the electrical bills, we're in the process of getting ready to raise them higher, because now we have that room to move it from zero to 10%. But prior to the election, it could go no higher than 3%. So the Proposition A removed that cap of 3%.
Who kind of pushed, who was kind of the push behind this proposition?
Anderson Land was the councilman at the time that pushed the Proposition A. I believe he didn't give the people the full perspective of what the actual Proposition A really meant. I think he just went with the narrative of saving money, people their money on the light bill without giving them the full legal logistics of how it would work. And by people not understanding, if you remember a few months back, electrical rates were going down organically, genially, because there was no more that she could raise. But now, if you've noticed in your light bill the last couple of weeks, they have been going back up, and that's because of the effect of the Proposition A, which allows the city to have that range to go from three to 10.
So, once that proposition was passed, then it automatically went into effect?
That is correct.
So, according, you know, from your perspective, city didn't have to do anything beyond that, city hall didn't have to do anything beyond that, proposition passed, went into effect.
Yeah, so if you look at it in a whole, the Proposition A, it helped the city, but hurt the citizens.
So it gave about seven more percent space.
That's correct.
To increase.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm quite certain, nobody understood, nobody understood that narrative. Wow, okay, interesting.
Yeah, because if I'm not mistaken, I know, I don't have my book in front of me, but in the budget meeting, because of the Proposition A, the city is predicted or projected to make an extra, I think, $400,000 based off of the Proposition A. It's predicted to make that much, much money, now that we have the layers removed from three to 10.
Okay. That's kind of an eye-opener in a way.
That's correct.
And if all of that is true, it's interesting how narratives kind of catch fire.
Yeah, my biggest thing is, I know sometimes people move off emotions, but you must have logic, you must have facts when you're getting into bed with something. If you don't, like you say, your emotions can make you think one thing, but in reality, you're hurting yourself at the back end of it, so.
Got you, got you. So another thing that was hot topic around the time you were running was broadband. So, is there, you know, obviously broadband was, you know, a lot of, I guess I'll say this, the narrative is that the broadband idea is pretty much as it pertains to Kramer, the Kramer Group, Kramer Services Group or whatever, that is a concluded thing. But is there anything, is there anything at this point, as far as broadband goes, that's relevant to the community?
The broadband conversation is being popped back up slowly but surely. There are a few major companies that are wanting to come in and bring the broadband back into the city.
But actually bring service?
Best brings service, that is correct. Bring service and bring it at a very low cost. So, I can't say the names, but they're very, very well-known names that are wanting to come in and help with the broadband project and bring it into the city.
And so, with that, I would assume if they're bringing services, then they're proud, and there's a difference between construction and services.
Correct.
And so, the situation before was mainly construction and no services.
Right.
Or we were going to shop the service side of it, once we had it set up.
Correct.
Alright, so now renowned companies, or nationwide companies potentially, are wanting to bring services in, so they'll be taking the infrastructure side of things probably as well.
Yeah, it'd be 100%, if we decide to go with the broadband, if we decide to go with one of the major companies, then they'll do everything, they'll do the construction.
100%.
100%, and then they'll bring the actual broadband to the door of the customers.
100%.
100%.
See, it was just less than six, eight months ago, everybody was talking about, you know, "We've got to pass this down." They pulled the Nancy Pelosi deal. "We've got to pass this, so we can read what's in it."
Right.
But the truth of the matter is, if you look at the, if you look at the contract that was set up for Kramer, you're still going to be without services. You're just going to have infrastructure. So now, six, seven months down the road, now you've got big ballers in the mix.
That's correct.
Who's willing to cut that check.
That's correct.
For this business.
That's correct.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to remind everybody, this was said on the radio a couple of times, but here's the thing, I can't vouch for everything that's said on the radio, I can only vouch for what's said on this show.
Right, right, right.
But at the same time, to me, I'm sitting here going, okay, you know, we didn't have to wait 10 years.
No.
It wasn't like, it wasn't like we had people dying in the streets out here, right?
Right.
You know, it wasn't like people were dying because they didn't have access to broadband.
That is correct.
Okay, so, well, praise the Lord and hallelujah for that. Broadband potentially may be coming with some people who's cutting checks, that's a good thing.
That is correct.
So, well, this brings me to an interesting point, brings me to an interesting point about what's going on now.
Yeah, correct.
So you got the, you got, there's a lot of dust being kicked out, we'll use your words, there's been a lot of emotions.
Yes.
Been a lot of emotions jumping around.
Right.
About this situation with this ordinance that was passed just the other night. And if you hear the dog in the background, disregard the dog. But nonetheless, here's the thing, you guys, looking at this, looking at this agenda, it looks like a pretty sleepy agenda.
Yeah.
It was a sleeper, except for what has pretty much, I don't know if it's pissed off people, I don't know if it's scared the crap out of people, I don't, you know, I heard one lady say, "This is not the direction that Jasper needs to be heading."
Right.
And I'm sitting here going, okay, wait a second, let me get a copy of this ordinance, so let me read it.
Correct, yeah.
Alright, and so, as I'm sitting here looking through this thing, there's a lot of, once again, going back to narratives versus fact.
Right.
Right? What was your interpretation?
Well, the interpretation of the whole amending the alcohol and beverage ordinance was due to the Fall Fest that we have going on September 17th.
Okay.
So, the thing about it was, when it came to vendors, right, we were going through the list of vendors and what they want to bring and what they want to have. If you remember back, I want to say May, around Cinco de Mayo, you know, they had a nice turnout.
Which is normally a celebration of beer.
That's correct.
In a way, I have to say.
Right.
You know, at least that's what I celebrate.
So, one of the actual vendors, who was there, wanted to be in at the food fest. But due to how we have our ordinance, prior to then, there was no alcohol on city premises.
Okay, so it was an absolute?
Yeah, 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 you couldn't do anything. And I think when I did my homework on it, I think for many years, many other departments have wanted to have events and do things at the park that might, that might have or would have had alcohol there. So let's say even at the minimum of wine.
Okay.
I don't quote me on it, but I think that the wine company here wanted to have an event and they wanted to have wine, but they couldn't because, you know, of the ordinance.
Right.
So, because if we're thinking like in the future, you know, this is something that is supportive culture, right?
Right.
So, the thing was, we wanted to amend the ordinance that put it in a controlled substance type of environment. That if you, if any vendor required or had all of the TABC state regulations, everything that they needed as a vendor to have, then they can go through by getting a permit and be able to be a vendor.
Okay.
And that would be the only way that it would be able to be bought or consumed if it went through that way.
Okay, so here was, so the narrative was.
Correct.
Ladies and gentlemen, before you go out and you buy a booth to start selling crack and meth.
Buy a crack.
I get, because of the phrase here, controlled substance.
Right.
As it's defined by the Texas Health and Safety Code.
Correct.
Alright, so this was the narrative that was basically put out there that, you know, city hall done knocked the wheels off this whole thing, and said, hey, listen, here's what we're going to do. You know, any kind of controlled substance. However, if you flip the page on this article.
Right.
Which is Article 4, ladies and gentlemen, you can probably go and find it, you can probably find it on KJS, matter of fact. I don't know if it's on there, it'll be on Not on the Payroll. But having said that, if you flip on here, it says, flip over here, it actually outlines, it says Section 17.5-8, beer or intoxicating liquor.
Right.
Okay, so the intoxicating liquor got people a little bit squirrely, because you know, everybody's thinking about their uncle, who can't show up without a fifth, right?
Right, right.
And so, now the question is, is liquor going to be available? Obviously so, right? But if you continue reading, if you continue reading, that basically means that anything, beer or intoxicating liquor. So that's going to include wine, that's going to include Jim Beam. If Jim Beam wants to come down here, or if Jack Davis wants to come down here, they can access, or they could pay the permit to be a vendor at the said events, sponsor events by the city.
Correct.
What constitutes something that's sponsored by the city?
I think when everything, when the city is, I guess you would say sponsoring by putting money into it, it's on city property. I believe from the archive of events, we have events that's been here for years, like the Fall Fest, Isaiah Festival, 1st of July, Kipit at the Park, those are establishing events that are sponsored, put on 100% functioned by the city.
Okay, so, so then, that would be a little different than any event that's happening. Like, say if I go down there and I talk to the city.
Correct.
And I rent the nice parking lot over there.
Correct.
To have my own car show.
Correct.
So that's going to fall under a different situation.
That is correct.
Okay, so the liability, you know, that was another, that was another caveat of this deal. What's the liability to the city? What's the level of liability on the city? If you're opening this up to beer and alcohol, and here's the thing, I'm not a teetotaler. I was raised by teetotalers, but I love beer, okay? And intoxicating liquors, we'll say that much. So, but my point is, my point is, you have to, the question is now liability. So say somebody comes to, I don't know, Christmas in the Park, is Christmas in the Park an actual city sponsored thing?
Yes, it's put on by the city.
Okay, okay, alright, so if that's the case, if somebody comes down there and they drink too much, or whatever, obviously intoxication is still illegal.
That's correct.
Right? So public intoxication, there's going to be like a gray line there.
That's correct.
So I wonder, I wonder the process, and obviously, is it going to be on the city from a liability standpoint, or will it be on the vendor to make sure that people aren't getting over intoxicated?
I think, I want to say, if I'm correct, it's a 50/50 liability, because with having the actual state license, you should know how much to serve to the individual.
Okay.
And what we're doing, it does not trump what state law says.
Right.
Right, so those laws still, you know, are put into place.
Right.
So if you do show up intoxicated, whether you bought something or you got drunk at home, you're still liable to be arrested for intoxication.
Yeah.
I think with the ordinance, it just gives a little bit of, I don't know.
Gives a little bit more flexibility, not as much as... That was the attempt, is what you're saying.
It's the attempt.
That was the attempt, it would open it up for some other, for some vendors, maybe bigger vendors who want to come in and supply beer and that type of thing. And then, or I mean, because honest to God, I mean, it's nothing for you to see Budweiser at events down in Beaumont, it's nothing for you to see, you know, Coors, it's nothing for you to see those groups, but this somehow got lumped into meth and crack, and the next thing we know, we're all shooting heroin on the side of the street. You know, we're going to start handing out heroin here, you know, in Jasper, Texas. And so, I want to finish out what this says, because the interesting part to me is, this is where narrative and fact collide, right? So, it says Section 17.5-8, beer, and it says this in bold, beer or intoxicating liquor, period. So this is, that's the heading for this entire section.
Correct.
"It shall be unlawful for any person within or upon any park or playground under city jurisdiction to sell, possess, give away, or consume any beer or intoxicating liquor of any kind." Period. Then it says, "Note, all City of Jasper sponsored events shall be exempt from this section." Now, the way these ordinances, these ordinances kind of read out like a lot, like contracts a lot of times.
Correct.
And so you have an ordinance, then you have articles inside the ordinance, and then inside those articles, you have a breakdown of sections.
That's correct.
Okay, so, somehow or another, someone missed exempt from this section. This section refers to Section 17.5-8.
Correct.
The beer or intoxicating liquor. It does not go back here, and honest to God, I'm going to put this up on the website, but it does not refer to Section 17-40, 17-41, 42, 43, or 44, which talk about the definitions of alcohol, beverage, controlled substances, intoxicated, intoxication, the whole nine yards. So, it's not talking about all these other sections in the article. It is referring to, and if you deal with anybody, that was another question, specific to the attorney, the city attorney. It was my understanding that the city attorney had not seen any of this prior to it going on the agenda.
Before anything was written, before anything was put on the agenda, it went through the legal protocol to be seen, not only by the attorney Radcliffe, but any other outside attorney. We went through the protocol to not just one proof, but double proof what we were saying, to make sure that the wording was right.
Okay, so my question is.
Correct.
When Mr. Radcliffe says that he had not seen it.
From my understanding, Mr. Radcliffe seen it before it was even put on the agenda. He had to verify that, make sure that the legality of the wording was correct. And he was there at the meeting as well, when everything took place, so he was there. So if there was anything unlawfully that he was doing, he had the opportunity to say something at that point. But he had nothing to say, because from my understanding, he had already seen it prior to it being printed out and given to us.
That's your understanding?
That's correct.
Okay. Is it possible that that's incorrect?
I wasn't there, I only can tell you what I was told, and if anything was done illegally, he was present at the actual meeting.
I wouldn't think it would be an illegal thing.
Or anything.
I think anything that, you know, obviously you're using him kind of as a sounding board, really.
That is correct.
For legalities, right?
Right.
And so, so who, how did you come to the, how did you come to understand that Mr. Radcliffe had seen it prior to it being put on the agenda?
When I actually went back to make sure that everything was right after the initial morning phone call, I went back to the city hall and talked to Ms. Karen and everyone in charge and asked to make sure that everything that I thought was correct. And from my understanding, Ms. Karen told me that prior to her writing, Mr. Radcliffe had already seen it before it was even printed to us.
Okay.
And that was the city secretary.
Easy enough.
Correct.
Easy enough. So, maybe there was some confusion somewhere along the way. And, you know, honestly, with narratives, you really, there can be a lot of confusion.
Correct.
I would go back to the fact that this is talking about the section, not the article. If it was going to read about the entire article of this ordinance.
Right.
It would have said, "All City of Jasper sponsored events shall be exempt from this article", instead of from this section, which refers to specifically beer and intoxicating liquors.
That is correct.
So, do you know who drafted this ordinance?
Like the original, or who updated it?
How did this thing, not the original, but this amend?
Everything went through city secretary and city manager.
Okay.
So, if I'm not mistaken, I don't want to put all the liability on the city secretary, but I want to believe that it was a conjoint thing put into place to make sure that what we was requesting and the wording was correct.
Okay, and who was, who was kind of, you guys just believed you needed to get this done before Fall Fest, because you're going to have vendors come in that actually want to be able to provide services?
The thing was, it was a 50/50 thing. The thing was, because of vendors who do sell alcohol, we wanted to make the change just in case.
Right.
So just in case, leaving that door open. It's not guaranteed that the alcohol vendor would show up at the food fest or the Fall Fest or July 4th, but we leave that room in case someone wanted to.
Got you.
Right, so we're not saying that anyone can come, they have to meet state regulations and things like that, before they can even become a vendor. But we leave that room of opportunity in case someone would like...
In case you have a vendor come in.
Plus, it's also a test run to see how it goes. If you look at the beginning of the ordinance, it says that we have the power to always amend and to change anything at any time. So if it's something that might not be going the right way, at any moment, we can always change it back.
You know, we should.
Yeah, we left that room just in case, right? So, it's one of those things where we covered ourselves, in case it's not going the way we think it should go, or we just say nothing, we can always go back and revert it back to what it originally said. So we left that room forever.
Well, see, in another part of this, this Section 17.5-8, is that if it was going to include heroin and all that other stuff, it would be listed. If it was going to include crack and meth, it would be listed right here in the bold headline.
That is correct.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think, once again, some emotions just got a little stirred up and we might need to consider, I mean, because honest to God, if you look at this agenda, you were at the meeting.
Yeah, it was a...
How many people you think showed up to the meeting?
Well, I mean, there was nobody from the public. The actual meeting was really a budget meeting.
Okay.
Of the council and all of the supervisors of all the departments of the city.
Okay.
That's what the original meeting was, so it was a budget meeting, so.
Does everybody pretty much seem to be on board with this, with this ordinance outside of Councilman Land?
Yeah, mostly.
Okay.
Everybody is really, because everyone understands what we're trying.
Where we're heading.
Yeah, and no one is thinking that, oh, it's going to harm anybody or put anybody in danger. That's never, that's never the in case. We just wanted to have an opportunity, if anybody wanted to have alcohol or vendors, let's just say vendor, right? Then they have the opportunity to. And depending on how it goes, I know there's other departments, like you say, chambers of commerce and people who have had ideals, like you say, maybe like a beer fest and things like that. It kind of opens up that door to say, okay, we see that it's working well, let's see if we can open up the door more responsible people, because we don't know how people would react to it. And so, if it goes wrong, we shut the door. If it goes well, it opens up the opportunity for other departments outside of the city to be able to indulge in what we're trying to do.
Okay, so, for all of the people out there who are under a different narrative, and for all of the people who are out there who are saying, you guys, you guys being the city councilmen, are leading Jasper into the abyss of Satan's back pocket. What would you like to say? What would you like to say to those folks? Because I'll be honest with you, we still have, we still have a demographic that's very split on some of these topics.
Right, definitely. I always tell people that you have just to believe in who you elect, and if everything that is coming out of someone's mouth is negative, then watch that person. Right? If someone is only talking about the negativity of what's going in there with the positivity, then beware of who you listen to and where news come from. So, just as much as you might not hear or might not understand what's going on, ask yourself, well, what's really going good? We have more going good in the city than someone manipulating people to be able to feel what they feel. So, I would tell the people, just be aware, we have a lot of great things coming on, not just for the community, but for the youth as well.
Now, there's some people out there that's going to hear what you just said, and they're going to hear it, and they're going to go, oh, that was, that was a, that was a rock thrown at KJS.
No, it's not a rock being thrown at KJS. KJS only reports what it is, but like how I'm coming on, I'm telling you the behind the scenes of what we have working on, it should be more of a dialogue between the city council and KJS.
So my question is this, because here's what I know to be absolute fact.
Correct.
Okay. I've put out invitations to everyone on multiple occasions.
Correct.
With deaf ears, except for yourself.
Right.
And Councilman Land.
Correct.
So, I guess my question is, maybe, maybe KJS is looking more friendly than I am, but, you know, I know that they've put out a consistent open door policy. I guess my question is, how do we bridge the gap, it's kinda like inviting somebody over to eat at your house.
Right, right.
You know, I've been invited over to some folks' houses, and I, I saw what they brought to dinner on the ground, I don't wanna eat none of that.
Right.
I don't, I, I don't know how clean that house is, you know what I mean, that type of thing.
Right.
But on the flip side, on this deal, where, where there's two obvious open doors for councilmen.
Right.
You know, it, it almost behooves, behooves the council, to be clear, open, and honest.
Yeah.
And without strings attached, really kind of, hey, this is kinda what we're doing, this is what we're looking at doing. Um, obviously, you can answer for everybody on the council, and I wouldn't want that, I wouldn't wanna put that on you at all. But at the, at the same time, you know, the council is one hundred percent got my information. And if they don't, I'll put it out at the end of this, this little broadcast.
Right.
But, you know, I'd love to sit out with everybody, because some of this stuff, I think narrative gets moving faster than the fact.
Yeah.
And just as simple as one word, section, this section, two words. Pretty much clears up the fog for me, and it should clear up the fog for most people, you guys are just looking for presenting, providing a place. And an atmosphere for more opportunities.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so, if people are out there and they're listening, they need to be cautious of that negativity.
Yeah, I mean, um, look at the facts, um, I have no problem, um, coming multiple times if you need me to, once a month. Just to give you an insight.
Kind of updates.
Of where we're going, what we're doing, the mindset, right, it's like you hear it after the fact, and I think that is. I don't wanna say what's wrong, but it needs to be improved, I think that from the city to the media, to the people, we should know. As a body of people of where we're going.
Agreed.
Yeah, we should know like what's coming out the pipeline.
Right.
What, what we are, where we're trying to go, so it's not like boom, we made a move that is kinda like out of the blue.
Yeah.
And it, it, it's misinformation, miss, miss dialogue, miss narrative, but if you know where we're going as a body, if you know where we're going as a city. Then nothing can be surprising to you.
All right, so, so then my, my question would be this, because it wasn't just too long ago that the, that the city council was voting. And put sixteen million dollars in limbo.
Correct.
On something that was completely, um, it was, I will say this, I, I won't, I won't tap into my redneck elements.
Okay.
But, uh, it, in, in, in a real way, it, it seemed to be hasty. Okay, so my, you know, let's just talk about SRMPA monies for a moment.
Okay.
Um, and granted, I, I know, you, you've, you're about six months in the game, you know, so I get it. Uh, at the same time, just from logic and reason.
Right, right.
Okay, would it be smart, because one of the things I have, that has always impressed me about Jasper is this. We have a lot of real smart business people in this community, okay? We have a lot of business people who are used to managing multi-millions of dollars. I would venture to say that no one on the council manages budgets upwards of two million dollars per year. Would you, would you agree with that?
Alright, yeah.
Okay, so, would it be smart for the city council to sit down? And maybe. Open the door to some very smart business people in this community as a sounding board. For some of these ideas, because I'll be honest with you, if you look at the thirty something million that's sent in, or whatever that minus. You know, Matthew McConaughey's, uh, cut down there in my Bellevue, um, if you, if you look at this. And you say, okay, we've got thirty something million dollars here, we wanna be good stewards over this money.
Oh, definitely.
So, why wouldn't we employ the wisdom and clarity and administrative value that we have? Coming out of a lot of these business owners, I understand a lot of people got a lot of things going, but, I think there could be a sound, a board. That could be set up to specifically say, eh, you know, if it's over two million dollars, or if it's over a million dollars, let's throw it to the board. Let's see what the board says, kind of as a first, uh, a first, in, in a way, kind of a, um. Uh, a test, test subjects of the smartest people in the community.
Yeah.
You think that's valuable?
Yeah, I think, I mean, to me, I'm really big about knowledge, so, um, to me, knowledge is power. So, to be able to get someone's perspective of opinion who does this on a daily basis.
Right.
I'm all for it, um, I think that, that'd be vital, it'd be, you know, very great for the council, the city, and that board. Of whoever it consists of.
Right.
Um, to just go over and brainstorm, like if there's an ideal.
Yeah.
To allow them to be like, you know, it seems more feasible, it seems more regional, we can make this happen. I think going through that protocol would be great, I'm down for having that type of second opinion or, or third opinion, you know, you know.
Cause it's kinda like what you guys are doing on the law, legal side of things.
Yeah.
With these ordinances and stuff, you're, you're opening it up to multiple, multiple eyeballs.
Yeah.
And to be honest with you, you know, I, I think before we, you know, what they refer to as step on it, sometimes. Uh, what, you know, really the idea would be, it, something like that could prevent. Maybe this misstep with what was going down with the, the sixteen million we was fixing to cut to Kramer. You see what I'm saying? Because the thing is, I mean, we're just sitting here talking about an ordinance.
Right.
Okay, about opening up, which I'm all for, opening up the opportunity for more vendors to come in and sell product.
Right.
That's, that's the point, and more vendors means, uh, more money in the long run to those events. And, uh, it helps those things going, so we're talking about something very small in the grand scheme of things.
Okay.
But whenever we flip the switch and we go, hey, let's go ahead and cut sixteen million dollar check, and pay a guy twenty-five thousand dollars a year. I feel like there's a few other, uh, there's a few other years we could have put that in, that would've said, yeah, wait, hold up. You know, so, I don't know, I don't know how that, I don't know how that functions and how that moves forward, but. It, it almost seems like, you know, between you and, uh, Councilman Lane, and, you know, y'all might be able to come together and, uh, piece something like that. Yeah, I don't know.
That'd be no problem, I don't have no problem with that, I'm all for it, like you say, the more knowledge, um, the more, the more reasonable it is. Because they might see something that I can't see.
Sure.
Or I can see something that they can't see.
Sure.
And I think iron is sharper than iron, so, if you have someone, like you say, who deals with a budget of two million on a daily basis or yearly basis.
Yeah.
And you have us who are, are just workers, and you know, we, we manage home, right? Managing my home and my bills is different than managing a two million dollar budget, so how you may see it, I may not see it that way.
Right.
Right, so to have that person and have that dollar, I'm, I'm always for it.
That'd be a great benefit, I think.
Yeah, I'm always for it.
Councilman Lewis.
Yes, sir.
Man, I really appreciate you sitting down, and matter of fact, let's do this, let, let's, let's go ahead and make it, make it, uh, make it a monthly deal or something like that. Where you, you can sit down, and, and here's the other thing, I'll, I'll even open it up to this. Um, if, if you have some of the other councilmen who would like to sit down with us at those same times, so let's do it. Because I'm, I'm completing the game, cause my whole objective here is to make sure that the public is informed from the horse's mouth.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, and at least has some clarity, even if it, even if it means just correcting one word, or.
Yeah, I, I, I believe that it's, it's very important to be a hundred percent transparent with everyone.
Yeah.
Um, everything that happened is not gonna be liked about, liked by everyone, but if you know the truth.
Yeah.
And, and you know what's going on, then you can decipher how you feel by what we're moving towards, so. If I have to come back once a month and just update you, or update the city on where we're going, the ideals, what we're putting into place, how far we are. From making it becoming possible, it'd be no problem.
Very cool. Councilman Lewis, we appreciate you taking time with us today, and, uh, uh, we will definitely stay in touch. Ladies and gentlemen, um, go get involved with your city, find out what's going on, ask questions. Touch base with your city council people, ask questions, man, if you got questions, don't just believe the hype or the street talk. The street talk is what gets us in a problem, you know, it's kinda like you said before, you know, I mean, you gotta, you gotta really pay attention to who you get in bed with. And so, you know, especially with, with, with these situations like this, Councilman Lewis, we appreciate your time.
Oh, no problem, thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.